Going live.
Yep.
It's preparing right now, so it might take just a second.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, well, we have ten seconds yet. Okay, one, two, three, four. Hi. We're missing a couple of council members, so. We have five, six of us. Jake is missing. He'll probably join us, so let's go ahead and call our regular city council meeting together. We are doing this electronically. We believe we have worked out the kinks to be able to have some of our citizens participate. Certainly, they're able to view, and so. With that, we do note that we have a full quorum present. And we're beginning, begin our opening ceremony with Councilmember Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a few comments, and then I have a video that hopefully will show. Looking at the data, it's apparent that tonight, the, we will cross 2 million cases of this COVID-19 virus throughout the world. And that's reported cases. Personally, I believe that it is underreported in many places. We will probably also pass 130,000 dead reported from this virus. Think that we are very fortunate, living in Utah, that the impact here has not been so great as in other places around the world and even in the country. And yet, we all struggle, or at least I struggle, with decisions being made for me by other people that are in positions where they are required to make decisions. Sometimes I don't agree with those decisions. I think maybe things should be done differently or on a different timetable. But this is an opportunity for us to care about our neighbor and care about our community and act in accordance with plans and procedures so that we can stay as safe as possible as a community and make some personal sacrifices for the greater good, and I am all about that. I found this video that includes film footage from New York, Chicago, Budapest, Paris, and Lisbon, and it's set to some music. And it is a musical video, so you're certainly free to sing along, but please mute your microphone. As I will.
Hello darkness, my old friend. I've come to talk with you again. Because the visions softly creeping left its seeds when I was sleeping. And the vision that was planted in my brain still remains within the sound of silence. In restless dreams, I walked alone in narrow streets of cobblestone. The halo of a street lamp. I turned my color to the cold and damp. When my eyes were stained by the flash of a neon light that split the night and touched the sound of silence. And in the naked light I saw 10,000 people, maybe more. People talking without speaking. People hearing without listening. People writing songs that voices never share. And no one dared disturb the sound of silence. Foolish I, you do not know. Silence like a cancer grows. Hear my words, and I'm a high teacher. Take my oath, and I'm a high reach you. But my words, like silent raindrops fell in the golden lens of silence. And the people bound and raised to the neon god they made. And the sign flashed out in his warning. And the words that it was forming. In the signs said the words and the prophets are written on the subway walls. Tiananmen halls
It's scary to me to see all of those places so empty, and we are not that empty yet, but we should still do what we can to stay home when we can and protect our neighbors and families. That's it, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from April 7.
I move for approval of the minutes of April 7. It's Jake.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? Don't see them, so. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, since no one said no, by any indication, the minutes are approved. We now have Nicole, our public comment portion, and as I understand it, we have a minimum of two, I believe, that are available to speak, and you're going to handle that, correct?
Yes, sir. So first, we had Mr. Jim Beesock, who signed up for public comments. So Jim, you are now unmuted, and we'll go ahead and start your five-minute timer.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I wanted to talk about, you got, tonight, you guys are voting on the purchase of two new trucks. Back at the beginning of the year, in the strategic plan meeting, it was brought up about city properties being unkept, and you guys agreed to bring on two new employees to help with the weeds, the trash, and the other issues. Well, now come to find out, they're bringing on four full-time and four part-time and spending $84,643, if you guys prove it tonight, for two trucks. I, I hope you guys turn down the two trucks. I'm all for the city bringing on more employees to fix the city property issues because it is brought up regularly in the ALJ hearings, and it's just blown off. Citizens use the same excuse, we don't have the money, and I know this was talked about in strategic meeting. But a year ago, in one of the ALJ meetings, a citizen brought up before Mr. Morris about the Community Preservation Building, which is code enforcement, housing, and the animal control, about outside stores, solid waste, trash, and stuff around those built weeds in the parking areas. To this day, a lot of those issues are still there. If this would have been a business in West Valley City, they'd been fined over 182,500 bucks to date, or a resident would have been $9,125. This is something that needs to be fixed. We need to hold the city to, you guys need to hold the city to a higher standard. We're asking the property owners of West Valley to do it, but the city's not doing it. Second, it was brought up about the water and water bills possibly going up. There's been several times where people have asked about putting in the phony-looking grass in their yards. It's not a live material, but it's not the astroturf. It's the, it's the good stuff. It looks just like grass. Once it's installed, you can walk on it. It's not hot. Water goes through it. Dogs can pee on it. It goes through other stuff they have to pick up, but because of the ordinance, 24/7/101 5 slash A, it talks, it has to be a live material. Once it's installed, you can't tell the difference, even a lot of times when you go down and touch the stuff. This is something that you guys might want to look at about amending this ordinance, and that there's two or three other ones that go with it to fix it, so people can put this in. It actually looks better. It's no maintenance. There's no bugs. Goldbers, all that stuff can't come up through it. Those are two things I had. I'm done, Nicole.
Thank you. Next, Nicole.
We have a Ms. Molly Upshaw. Ms. Upshaw, you are now unmuted, and you're able to speak.
Thank you so much. Like she said, my name is Molly Upshaw, and I am the president of the Community Council at Truman Elementary School, which is at 4,700 South and 3,200 West. Part of our duties as a community council each year is that we draft a safe-walking route for the students who live within our school boundaries. This year, there are some new homes within our boundaries. It's a development of townhomes on 2,700 West, on the west side, just north of 4,700 South. So when we were creating a safe-walking route for the students who might be living there, we noticed that there is no sidewalk on that portion of 2,700 West between 27, or between 4,700 South and the townhome development. There are other options for the students. They could go north up to the stoplight at Bedford Road and go through the neighborhood, but that is a significantly longer route for them to take, and we feel, you know, they'd probably just go down 2,700 South anyway because it's so much shorter to access the school. So as a community council, we would love for there to be a sidewalk added on that portion of 2,700 West. We think it would be important for student safety, and as I'm a resident of West Valley City as well and live in the area, I think it's important for community safety, too. There's even a bus stop there, right by the driver's license division, and there's just no sidewalk there for those people either, so. That's basically it. We'd just like to have a sidewalk in that portion of 2,700 West. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upshaw.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Nicole?
No, sir.
Okay. So seeing no one else, we'll move on from our public comment. And let's see, Mr. Pyle, any comments from you?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would make a quick comment to Ms. Upshaw. I'm not sure if she has already spoken with Public Works Department, but just for a broader overview of how the sidewalk projects are put on their list, prioritized, and all that sort of thing might be helpful for. Obviously, as I know, one or more of you might also say we can't really promise putting sidewalk in any particular place at any given time, but we are actually doing a lot of sidewalk improvements on 2,700 West after many years of trying to get that done and move that forward. So just would encourage her, if she hasn't already done so, to speak with them as well, or myself as well. That'd be fine, too. Thanks, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Any from the council? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item seven on our agenda, our resolutions. We have Resolution 20-35, which extends the local emergency declaration that we made concerning the COVID-19 pandemic. We're extending that by just a few weeks, I believe, and let's see, to May 15. So this is the same declaration we've had. We've simply extended the time on it, and then it will be reevaluated in the future to see if there is any need to extend it beyond that point. I do know they're talking a lot about hoping to see things leveling off by then, but I'm not sure that it will be sufficient to change that declaration, but we'll see. Anything else you want to add? Wayne on that? Okay, then, council members, any comments?
Move for approval of Resolution 20-35.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. That's properly before us. If there's no further comments, don't see any, then let's go ahead and vote on that.
Councilman Petisimano?
We can, yeah.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Because it is a voice vote, we actually have to hear your voice. I can read your lips, but I have to hear. So does Nicole. No, there we go. Now.
Okay, aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution 20-36 to approve a cooperative agreement between our city and the Utah Department of Transportation for the installation of some sensors. This cooperative agreement, the state is putting in in order to gather traffic information, and by entering into this agreement, we will be able to participate in that agreement and have access to that same information. So this, it, this is not photocop. It does not read license plates. This is similar to the old rubber hose across the road to count traffic, gather information in order to be able to plan for future traffic flow. That is the issue before us to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 20-6.
Second. Okay, Nicole, you got that? All right, then, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, excuse me, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petisimano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune? Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 20-37 to approve the purchase of two Ford F-50 trucks from Young Ford. These two vehicles are for the newly-approved cleanup crew and transportation division. The cost will be to not exceed $84,643. And the trucks will be outfitted with a dump bed, so of course, Young Ford is on the state contract, so looks like everything's in order with that introduction to the council.
So when we brought this up as strategic plan, I also remember Mr. Pyle saying we just wanted to start with two people, one vehicle equipped with sand blasters and cleanup equipment, weed eaters and such for that. So I would rather keep this to one vehicle and two people to start with and see how that goes and see what our needs really are.
With that comment, I do have a question for our city manager, Mr. Pyle. Mr. Pyle, what is the status of the employees that are being discussed? Are they already hired? What is the situation?
No, Mayor, the employees are not hired as of this point, and also probably one other clarifying point. Only one of the two trucks is for the cleanup crew. Maybe we should have Russ come on and make some comment to that as well.
Russ, you are unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me now, Nicole?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, so there are two trucks. The one is for the cleanup crew. The other truck is for the transportation division. It will be used as a sign truck in the winter months and to, as a paint truck in the summer months, which actually replaces an old, we have now. So there's really only one new truck, and that will be used for the cleanup crew. The other truck is really a replacement.
So I know it's a two-door truck, but we're looking at hiring four full-time employees and four part-time employees for the cleanup crew?
Yes, that is correct, and to readdress the comments I made last week on the subject. Yes, Councilwoman Lang was correct that when we first talked about this, the, and we were talking about it conceptually. I spoke to two people being there. The, the conversation at that point was one of generally, what do we want to do? What do we want to accomplish? How would we start that? What would we look at? And as I also mentioned last week, I'll remind that I did make commentary to the fact of, or the idea that we'd go out, we'd develop it, we'd assess it, and we'd bring you back our proposal. Assigning that question as to what would actually be needed to accomplish what we wanted to, I did that through the Public Works Department, and Mr. Willitsen came back, made the recommendation that he did, which I completely agree with, the, the logic and the thought that he put into that. Now, having said that, yes, it's my recommendation that we obviously purchase the truck, but then also that we do hire the people. Also don't have any heartburn with starting with two people either. That, of course, the whole program is from a policy standpoint, the councils to decide whether they want to do fully or not at all or partially, so that's, that would be fine with us. However, I do want to be clear, our recommendation is to do the whole thing.
Mr. Pyle, just, could you comment on the situation where we're looking at an uncertain future, and we're hiring, and we're looking to hire a couple of employees? Just kind of walk us through that, give us a little background. We'd hate to hire two employees and then not be able to sustain that situation.
Right, great question, Mayor, and just to sort of address that, it does seem a little incongruous, given the situation that we're in. However, these funds are really actually already in place, both in terms of a very solid fund balance in the sanitation fund, which is obviously a purpose for which cleanup and sanitation, keeping the city clean, would fall within the scope of what you could use those funds for. So we already have a very healthy fund balance in that area, as well as the revenues to at least keep that going for a couple of years before you'd even have to look at, probably around the time you get another sanitation rebid anyway again. So we feel comfortable that, A, it's not general fund money, B, there is a healthy fund balance and sanitation fund to fund this with, and C, from a, what our sanitation charges are, what we're incurring or bringing in from a revenue standpoint will support this as well. Also be glad to, I'm sorry, Mayor, to interrupt, I'd also be glad to have Mr. Willitsen comment further on that if you'd like to have some affirming or just extra color to that discussion, too.
Well, let's see if anyone on the council wants to ask questions or comment.
I'd just like to say that I'm very pleased with the program, whether it's two, four, or six people. We've, I've had complaints about, you know, it doesn't look great when you come to West Valley City. I think we ought to be the cleanest city. We ought to be an inviting place to come. We ought to set an example for people to maintain their properties by maintaining the right ways in public areas. And, you know, that said, tonight's resolution is about the purchase of two trucks, not the hiring of employees. Of course, we'll staff those, that the equipment that we purchase with the funds that have been set aside or are available for that purpose, which are not from the general fund. With that, I'll move for approval of Resolution 20-37.
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion?
I'm good with buying the trucks, but I would really like to have a conversation in study session about the number of employees.
Okay. Seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I mean, yeah.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petisimano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. Next, we have Resolution 20-38 to approve the purchase of one truck loader from Wheeler Machinery Company for $72,934 from this is for the Public Works Department with a brush cutter attachment. They'll get it from Wheeler Machinery. It'll replace a 10-year-old tractor mower. Unlike the tractor mower, though, the track loader will be able to be used for maintenance activities other than the, such as weed control or snow removal during the weather, during the winter, okay? So that's kind of the issue before us to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 20-38.
Second.
Properly for us, any further comments? Okay, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Uh, hold on. Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Petisimano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next on our agenda is eight, the consent agenda. There are There are four resolutions on there, twenty dash thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. These are all temporary construction easements on the forty-one hundred South project. The one kind of shows, you know, Claudia Street, but it's right around the corner there. So these are all impacted by that project, so pretty routine items. That's probably enough introduction on them, so to the council.
Move for approval.
So, okay.
Go ahead.
Move for approval of the four items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly before us, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Petisamani?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume? Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that completes our agenda. We do not have a need for a, an executive or closed session. Any, but before we adjourn, any comments on how we've been doing the microphones and everything are, is everyone comfortable? Any suggestions for any improvements? It seemed to work well with our two public comments as well.
I think it went well tonight, Mayor. Looking forward to getting back in city hall.
Yes, but not too soon, not too soon.
Yes, I agree. I think staff has done a great job putting in this all together, all together and getting us educated to be able to use it smoothly.
Yes. Well, we appreciate that. Appreciate the support of our staff. And I know that they're all available online. They're kind of held there in quiet mode. Just so we don't have everyone's breathing and everything being picked up on microphones and so. Where I think with just the ones we have on here, it's manageable, manageable. With that then, unless there's any other comments, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. We look forward to talking with you next week.
Thanks, everyone.